Little anything, I wear the big stuff. Yes, and I was a grandpa. Not what it's for, not supposed to get you anywhere.
No, secret order, secret manchey, whatever that is.
Yeah, it's nothing secret, we have big buildings with our, we have, we have big buildings with giant things, we donate more than any private organization in the world. It's pretty hard to be a secret when you're giving out that kind of money.
You guys are funny. Okay, so we're good?
Yeah. The hinder's all in.
Probably, yeah. Tell them you just arrived.
Who's on the phone that's not?
Please, Kevin.
I need to call order. We need to start this meeting. Could people who are on the phone, please mute their background noise, please?
Please.
We're picking it up here. Starting the Northampton County Council Meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. McGee, would you please lead us in the pledge?
People who are on the phone, please mute their background noise.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Mr. McGee, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. We, Ms. Zembo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzik.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Here.
Did I call pick?
Yes, you did.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of April first, two thousand and twenty-one?
Motion made.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, who's second, Mr. Giovanni, voice acclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. This evening, is there anyone from the public that wishes to address counsel? I have one person signed up. Corinne Goodwin.
May I?
Five minutes, sure.
I know you all love when I show up here, so. My name is Corinne Goodwin, my pronouns are she and her. I'm the executive director and founder of Eastern PA Trans Equity Project. And our organization serves hundreds of transgender citizens from Northampton County every year. And I'm here tonight to really speak on their behalf. Last time I was here was just a little over six months ago, and I really want to thank all of you for your unanimous vote to stand up for what is right in terms of supporting LGBTQ rights here in the county. So, thank you very, very much for that. It's truly appreciated. What I wanted to talk tonight is about, really, a larger issue, and one that I'm hoping that you all can help with. So, hopefully, as you all are aware, over ninety pieces of specifically anti-transgender legislation have been introduced across the states just over the last few months since the beginning of the year, including one just two weeks ago in the Pennsylvania State House. These are cookie cutter bills that are being supported and written by certified hate organizations, including the Family Research Council and the Alliance Defending Freedom. Bills like the recently introduced Fairness in Women's Sports Act, HB nine seven two, in the State General Assembly. These only have one purpose, and that is to systematically exclude transgender people, and in particular transgender children, from becoming full participants in our communities and in our society. They're also about inflaming these organizations' base to create financial contributions. In other words, they're really about two things, prejudice and greed. I personally know transgender people in this community who have become successful doctors, lawyers, business owners, even politicians. Many of them have been able to reach these milestones specifically because they were able to take part in school activities, things like sports. In sports, they learn how to make friends, they learn how to play by the rules, they learn how to win with grace, and they learn how to take the lessons from losing to heart. School sports and other activities from kindergarten through high school are not designed to provide scholarships. What they're designed to do is to produce better citizens. And for the life of me, I fail to understand why members of our community, including in this county, would want to prevent trans kids from leading rich and productive lives. Lives where they can contribute back to the community, where they can become homeowners and business owners and taxpayers that pay every county worker's salary. Ultimately, we want them to be able to give back more than they take. And again, the only explanation for these hateful bills is prejudice and greed. So, I'm asking for a favor from you all. I'm asking for you all to take a stand for trans kids, ninety percent of whom hear anti-trans remarks every day in school, seventy-seven percent who are actively harassed and bullied and even assaulted in school, fifty percent of whom skip school regularly, and therefore their grades suffer, and they are unable to continue their education, and therefore they become a burden on our society and a burden on this county. I'm asking you to take a stand for the parents of these kids and for the sixty-three percent of Americans who support rights for transgender people. So, the favor I'm asking is really very simple. I'm asking you to use your influence and to stand up for what's right. There's probably a couple ways you can do that. One, and I'm willing to work with you on this, is to draft a resolution supporting, showing your support for the rights of transgender people not to be discriminated against. And another one is for you to use your personal influence to reach out to our state legislators to remind them that prejudice and hate are never right. So, thank you very much for your time, as always. I'm very willing to work with you personally on these types of issues. I've shared with councilperson Zarinsky some information on issues around sports and transgender kids. But ultimately, the issue is that if we don't stop this now, it's only going to become worse. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And Corinne, any information that you want to pass to any other council members, please get it through Ms. Zembo or Ms. Shafnisky, and they'll make sure that we get it, you know, any copies of the bills or whatever you need to get to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other people who did not sign in but wish to speak at courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to the county executive report.
Thank you, ma'am. Nice to see my friend Corinne here tonight.
Jagger, would you come up here? Bob can come too.
Got it? I'm about to introduce you to a fantastic young man, but I want to explain to you why I'm doing it, in addition to the obvious. I have, you know, a great deal of pride in the Lehigh Valley and Northampton County specifically. And I often, when I talk to folks who don't know much about us from other places, tell them, one of the things that's true about us is we're a wrestling powerhouse. That's true. You know, some places produce basketball players, others football players. We are known for our wrestlers, we send them to Division One schools all the time. And right now, we have one of our wrestlers who's wrestling to wrestle in the Summer Olympics. So, wrestling is an amazing, amazing sport for many of our young people in Northampton County. And this is Jagger Condamiti, and I want to introduce you to him, for those of you who haven't read about him. He is a senior at Northampton Area High School and resides in Lehigh Township, Pennsylvania. And on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Jagger won the PIA class three A, hundred and sixty-pound title at the Giant Center in Hershey, Pennsylvania. The only thing I've ever done in Hershey has gone to the park. So, I'm obviously very impressed. It's his first state title in his less wrestling career, and the twenty-fourth for Northampton, so kudos to the concrete kids, too. He's showed true sportsmanship and dedication to his teammates, coaches, and mentors on the mat and off. The coaches, parents, and teammates were an integral part in guiding Jagger to victory through their support. Winning the PIA class three, hundred and sixty-five-pound title brings honor and pride to our community. Now, therefore do I, Lamont G. McClure, Northampton County Executive, on behalf of the citizens of the county, honor, recognize, and congratulate Jagger Condamiti for winning his first state title. Northampton County, Pennsylvania, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I should also note, his grandmother is a friend of mine. She's a retired county employee, and his grandfather worked here at Northampton County as well, so we have that connection. And, you know, the pandemic was hardest on the population who got the sickest, which was our elderly population. And unfortunately, we experienced all the loss we did. But the second hardest population was kids his age. And what his example shows to us is that there is hope, and that if you keep striving and moving forward into the future, there is a future. So many of them right now are questioning whether there is one, and I think Jagger shows us that there is, and we're all very proud of him.
Good luck to a fellow concrete kid. Go.
We want to get counsel in the picture, so.
I never got to the one.
Make sure you get counsel. Thank you. Thanks, buddy. Thank you. And good luck. Thank you. It's so nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
Just very briefly, on the appointments to the Grace Dale Advisory Board, I understand in my absence, a grave constitutional issue arose. And so, I went and I read the, when I read the charter, and, you know, I know, I know counsel got hung up, some members got hung up on the sixty days. But then I kept reading, and it says forthwith, which I then looked at the dictionary, the plain meaning in the dictionary, it means immediately. So, none of these positions were filled after the sixty days immediately, so it's my legal opinion that you forfeited your right to make the appointments. That's the kind of thing that would usually end up in court, but it's absolutely unnecessary to do so. While I do not concede your power because you failed to fill them forthwith, it was a failure on your part, I will accept any means by which you approve them tonight, whether that be by a resolution or without, and making plain for the record, without committing the executive branch now or here into the future to agreeing that this would be the proper mechanism to do so. Thank you.
Just a response. Congratulations on the young man that left, but don't, we have an Eastern guy going to the Olympics, too. Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, I was talking about him. I was talking about him. He's probably busy right now.
He's doing fine.
Yeah, he's probably busy. You're welcome.
I did have a question for you, but I warned if I could remember it in all the hoopla that we just experienced.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean the hoopla.
No, I, I.
These kids are just, it's just so tough for them, you know, when you see something like this, you really want to
No, I appreciate that.
Bring attention to it.
I would like to reserve the right that if my memory comes back later.
I'm not leaving.
Hour that I can ask you, and I.
I have to stay, I have to stay for the great constitution.
It was actually county business, and I apologize, I can't remember, it saved my life.
Right.
I'll get back to you. This evening, well, I guess I should say, we have had several presentations in the community lately. You know, we cracked a wall at the O T R L S R, whatever the letters are, and we had a presentation on teaching law enforcement officers, anti-bias training, and at both of these events, this entity was there and present, and I thought it would be good for us to hear about what they're doing, and so that's why I invited Mr. Joe Walsh here tonight, who's the executive director of Lehigh Valley Justice Institute. So, I'd like to ask him to come forward and discuss with us some of what's, why this group was founded and some of the work that they're doing.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. Does anyone mind if I take my mask off, just to be heard better? I'm not sure what your protocol is. Okay, very good. I'll try to speak louder. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to present an overview of our new organization, which is in Easton. We're serving the entire Lehigh Valley community. We're guided in our mission by the words of the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, that the arc of the moral universe is long, and I might add to that tedious, but in any event, it ultimately bends toward justice. And the picture that you see is the building we're located in, the Santander Bank Building in downtown Easton. That's a little more impressive than it, it looks. We're really the two middle windows on the top floor, but the two windows to the right are vacant, so we have room for expansion and certainly hope we do expand. So, what we are, we're a nonpartisan research policy and advocacy organization, and we're working to promote a reimagined criminal justice system here in the Lehigh Valley. In our work, we are driven by data. We're looking at specific numbers that show us what the effects of our criminal justice system are on Lehigh and Northampton Counties. We formed late last year, we launched in December of two thousand and twenty. We were an outgrowth of the Color of Justice Initiative, which some of you may be familiar with. That was pretty much spearheaded by Marvin Boyer, the Political Action Director of the Easton NAACP. And Marvin, working with numerous other organizations, had organized a number of forums on different aspects of the criminal justice system. And as we were working on those things, some of us involved in that stepped back and said, you know, it's great to have forums, and it's great to try to educate the public, but we really need to step back, and we really need to take a high-level academic study of criminal justice and all of the components in that system. And thanks to Richard Master of MCS Industries and his Unfinished Business Foundation, he pledged us multi-year support to get us up and running to viability. So, we are looking to be a long-term institution in this community. What impressed me so much about last year and the demonstrations that spontaneously grew out of the murder of George Floyd and various other tragic episodes of minority community members encountering law enforcement was the diversity, the diversity of people coming out and making their voices heard, and particularly the diversity among young people. It was just tremendous, it was uplifting. I have been involved in social justice issues for the past forty years. I have never seen a more diverse outpouring of people than we have seen in the last year. So, what we said was, there's a lot of great energy here, but how do we focus it? You know, it's one thing to go march in the streets, yell and scream, whatever, but how do we really focus it to solutions? So, if you look at our logo, you see basically what we are about. You see the clenched fist of protest, but in that fist is a pencil and an open book. And what we are seeking to do is develop solutions right here in our communities to address criminal justice issues and to take all of that energy and channel it in to very positive and very specific proposals to reform our criminal justice process. How do we do that? We do that in three ways. We do that through research, and in our research, we are using the absolutely abundant resources of the Lehigh Valley, the academic resources, and we've put together a fantastic academic team, which I'll get to in a moment. Then we want to take that research, and we want to develop specific policy proposals that can address certain issues in the criminal justice system. And finally, we want to advocate for those proposals. But our advocacy is really public education, engagement with stakeholders. We want to work with everybody involved in the system. We want to hear very diverse opinions and put them all together into a melting pot and see what the best policy proposals are that we can create. And as I said, we're doing that through data, but we're also going to do that through storytelling. I like to say that the data tells us the breadth of the problem, and the storytelling tells us the depth of the problem. So, that's what we're doing. We're looking at all sorts of aspects of the justice system, but we are very narrowly focused geographically on Lehigh and Northampton County. Okay, why are we doing that? Well, as you're probably very much aware, the Lehigh Valley was recognized in the last national election and in numerous national elections before then as the swing area of one of the swing states nationwide. And why is that? We have such a diverse collection of communities. We have the inner cities with minority populations. We have the suburbs, as bigger cities have around them, and we have rural areas, which tend to be more conservative. So, we think right here in the Lehigh Valley, we have a microcosm of the nation, and we are very confident that the solutions that we can develop here will be portable and can be taken to other parts of this country and implemented. So, who are we? I want to quickly run through our board members, and I was in front of Lehigh County Council last night and got bogged down on this part, so I'm going to try to do this quickly. Marvin Boyer is our board president, I had already identified him. He has been the Political Action Chair of the Easton NAACP. He was also recently named to Governor Wolf's statewide commission on law enforcement, and he, of course, is a longtime member of the Northampton County Prison Advisory Board. Wilburto Sicard is our vice president. He is a criminal justice organizer for C A C L V. He is also a recent graduate of Lehigh University with a bachelor's in history, summa cum laude, and this fall will be starting Yale Law School. Bob Walden is our treasurer, he is the head of the N Mass Incarceration Group of Power Interfaith. Antonia Griffo is our board secretary, she is a longtime attorney and also a retired magisterial district judge. So, when we talk about things like bail, she was setting it for six years. Then we have Ed Angelo, who is a longtime criminal defense attorney in the Allentown area. Richard Master, who I had already mentioned. In addition to his support of us, Richard's Unfinished Business Foundation is spending tremendous amounts of money nationwide as he is the chair of the Business Leaders for Reform of Healthcare. Hassan Bots is the executive director of Promise Neighborhoods of Lehigh Valley. He is also a Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health leader. Jennifer Swan is a biology professor at Lehigh, and Jennifer recently told me that she was having a class project dissecting sheep brains. We're not going to do sheep brains at the institute. Ebony Cunningham Stringer is a professor of criminal justice at Penn State. She also recently presented at a conference at Yale University. Halona Oaks is a professor of political science at Lehigh. Angela Bell is a professor of psychology at Lafayette College. Jose Rivera is a formerly incarcerated individual who has been doing tremendous community organizing work in Allentown, and he was recently featured in the Allentown Morning Call. Philip Davis is certainly someone who requires no introduction to this body. He is the, is a senior pastor of the Great Oshilo Baptist Church, which I believe is the largest congregate religious body in the Lehigh Valley. Phil Lauer also does not need an introduction here. He's a fifty-plus-year criminal defense attorney and former chair of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court Criminal Rules Committee. Robert Freeman likewise, he is the state representative from one hundred and thirty-sixth district. Justin Parker Fields is an organizer for Black Lives Matter and recently has been executive director for the organization Change Now. Michael Laws is the co-chair of the Pennsylvania Black Caucus, or vice chair, I'm sorry, and is a media consultant that you may have encountered. Mohamed Kaku is the president of the Al Haid Islamic Center. He is also the vice chair of the local ACLU chapter and is a board member of MGAJ, which is an organization seeking to increase Muslim participation in the electoral process. Kate Richmond has a degree in psychology, or is a professor of psychology from Nulenberg College. She is also the leader of our long-range project, which I'll mention in a moment. Bonnie Winfield, you may know, she is the founder of the Journey Home Project for female inmates reentering the community from Northampton County Jail. Louis Perez is a community organizer, the CEO and founder of Reciprocity, which is an organization that seeks to develop reentry programs and youth diversion programs, particularly for, you know, for juveniles who would enter the juvenile process if they did not have some other avenue to pursue. Dean Young, I'm sure you all know, he's the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of Easton. Lynette Sanchez is a languages professor at Moravian and is also, has also worked with the immigrant communities of Allentown, teaching English as a second language. Julie Tomasis is just a powerhouse, who, her current, she's involved in many organizations. Her current work for us is in developing alternative nine-one-one response systems. And she's done a lot of work with officials of Allentown and Lehigh County on that issue, and we hope to bring her talents here to Northampton County, to the city of Easton, and to the city of Bethlehem. And last but not least is Ross Marcus, he is the executive director of the Eastern Area Neighborhood Center, and I presume no stranger to those of you who have been here for a while, he's the former director of Human Services for Northampton County. In addition to our board, I went too far. In addition to our board, I went too far. In addition to our board, in addition to me, we also have two staff members at the moment. Cecilia Corame, who is our head researcher and administrative coordinator. She's a recent graduate of Moravian College with a degree in political science and peace and justice issues. She spent a year in Europe studying peace and justice issues and gives us a really good worldwide perspective on alternative approaches to criminal justice. Florence O'Gala is our data scientist. She just received a master's in applied economics. And one of the things that we are very interested in looking at is to try to put a number on the cost to the local economy of having a system of mass incarceration. And we're not just talking about the cost to the taxpayers to house people. We're talking about those people being sequestered in a jail and unable to contribute to their local economy. And if you want to see where we're going with this, just take a look at COVID and look at the effects on the economy of COVID. Well, in the same way that the economy tanks when we tell people to stay home, the economy tanks when we lock people up in jails, particularly if we do that pretrial because they can't make bail or something like that. So as our institute grows, what do we want? We want to provide to you academic-level research and analysis. We want to also be a reliable and authoritative source of data on the various and myriad portions of our criminal justice system. And we want to bring the best practices that we can find, both nationally and, as I said, even worldwide. We finally want to be a trusted community partner to you, to the administration, and to the courts in both Lehigh and Northampton County. Now, we're doing that on two tracks. One is we have a long-range research collaborative. These individuals from the institutions, which you can see, are working on a multi-year deep dive into criminal justice, and they're using an innovative research tool called participatory action research. The first stage of their research, which is just starting now, is getting together with people who are affected by criminal justice, people in communities affected by criminal justice, and the players in the system. And they are interviewing people in all of those categories, and they're listening to their perspectives. And it is from those interviews that they are actually going to shape the data that they want to look at and how the research is going to progress. It's a very cutting-edge tool in academic research, and we're proud to have all of them working for us on it. But while they're doing that, we have our board members and other interested people from the community on issue-oriented committees that are looking at the various items that you see here and trying to come up with some solutions right now while the long-range study is underway. So what are we doing right now? We've been here for three months since we rolled out. We're involved with Northampton County on a Georgetown University Pennsylvania Crime and Delinquency Commission program on juvenile justice and working to reduce the disparity, the racial disparity in juvenile detentions. We have had tremendous cooperation from both the administration and the courts in this regard. Our data scientists will be part of the Northampton County team. They'll be putting together a proposal for this program. We have also met with both the administration and the courts, specifically regarding COVID in the jails and what we can do to reduce jail populations and also deal with the conditions in jail. On policing, we have been working on 911 alternative responses. You may have heard of the Kahoots Program. That's one model of various other models. We recently had a program in Lehigh County where the Kahoots people came in from Eugene, Oregon, and the police chief of Ben Salem gave us an alternative coresponder model that he is implementing in his community. We're also looking at diversity, which is in departments, which is a necessary first step to community policing. And as I'm sure you know, we have been looking at training, and Guillermo Lopez, who is a member of our Police Reform Committee, recently appeared with county executive McClure, and the county is funding his work to train police departments in implicit bias. On the reentry side, we're looking at youth diversion programs, and we're also looking at the possibility of having a restorative justice center as part of the HUD proposal for the Union Street apartment, Union Street residents in Easton when they completely rehab that facility. And finally, on bail, we expect within the next few days to have a first tranche of data from the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts, looking at bail decisions going back to the beginning of 2018. And finally, on Thursday, April 29th, we are hosting a bail forum to discuss cash bail, and our main panelist will be the Honorable Glenn Grant, who is the judge who runs the entire statewide New Jersey court system, where they, in conjunction with, of all people, former Governor Chris Christie, have implemented some very substantial reforms to try to eliminate cash bail statewide in New Jersey. I certainly invite you all to go to our website, lvji.org, and register for that program on April 29th. And with that, I just thank you for the privilege of your time tonight, and I'd be very happy to entertain any questions.
Yeah, thank you. I see a lot of academic firepower there, and it seems like you're on the right track. I'll just let you know what some of my concerns are while I have you here, and in no certain order. First one was no-knock warrants. Unless somebody's life is in jeopardy, I don't want to see another Breonna Taylor or John Herco. That costs the citizens of the city of Bethlehem a lot of money. The other one is civil asset forfeiture. I don't believe we should be incentivizing the enforcement of the law. And then the last one, of course, is the war on drugs, and it's a failure. Let's be honest. And until we start treating misuse of drugs as a medical and/or psychological issue, this is just going to continue. You talked about other countries. We see in Europe, Portugal, the Netherlands, where they take an alternative approach. I'm all for reducing the number of people we have incarcerated here because it costs us a lot of money. I saw that young man going to Yale. Well, for what it's going to cost him, that's probably what it costs us to keep somebody here incarcerated. So I applaud what you're doing, and I think it's a good start, but I hope you really addressed those issues. Thank you.
We certainly intend to. And I might add, with respect to civil asset forfeiture, that has, over the last 10 years, been a very important crossover issue in the legislature of Pennsylvania. I think at one point, we had a bill that was cosponsored by Daryl Metcalf, not exactly a flaming liberal, and Daylon Leach, specifically on civil asset forfeiture. So yes. And I think so many of these issues, there's so much crossover, people know there's something wrong, they might not like some of the rhetoric, of course, but when you sit down and you look at the data and you get people together, I think you can come to some real good broad-based solutions, and that's what we intend to do.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Myers?
I can commend you on your program. I've been briefed by Mr. Masters and Mrs. Boyer on several occasions. The only issue I have, it's not issue, but a little more attention need to be dealt with the youth issue. If we can handle that situation, keep them out of the gangs, keep them away from that scene, and put more attention, because a lot of issues come from single parent or no parent. Anything I can do to help out, please feel free to call.
Thank you very much. And one of the things that we're looking at right now, and in fact, we're applying for a grant from the Kaplan Foundation, they have a grant for innovation in criminal justice, which we'll be applying for at the end of the month. And our approach is, there's a gentleman, Luis Perez, who's on our board, who's got a number of youth diversion programs, where he's working arrangements with the Allentown Police Department that when they encounter a juvenile who they believe would benefit from a diversion program, they hold off the criminal charges, and they contact his organizations and see if they can place them in one of these programs. The program that we're interested in offering is for people who are right there on the edge of the black hole of juvenile justice, pulling them back and showing them how they can be part of the system and how they can propose ideas and come to bodies like yours and work with you outside of the meetings and say, you know, these are proposals we have, is there a way to enact these into law? Work with the administration and say, you know, how can we implement this? Work with the courts. I mean, that's what we're looking to do. We're looking to partner with everybody. And I do have to tell you, in Northampton County, there has been tremendous cooperation and tremendous transparency, and we certainly appreciate that.
One other comment. Are you getting cooperations with school districts?
Interestingly, I was at the Boys and Girls Club event last night, and I was frankly amazed to see the number of Easton School District representatives there. So I'm sure they're interested in this. We are working with the Allentown School District and expect to be working with the Bethlehem School District in the near future.
So you reached out to Dr. Roy yet?
We have not reached out to Dr. Roy yet, but that's on our agenda.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for your time. And Mr. Myers is the head of our Courts and Corrections Committee. So if you have further updates or further reports that would interface with anything that we do, feel free to contact myself or him and let us know what's happening.
Okay. And to quote the NBC news anchor, Jose Diaz-Billard, "Thank you for the privilege of your time."
Thank you. And I remembered my question, Mr. McClure, do you mind approaching again? I'm sorry. Hey, it's county business. But you know why? Because it's April 15th and it's tax day, not tax day. But I had a question for you about county taxes and if there's any concern, because I realized last year, in the middle of the pandemic, we made accommodations and some waivers for timelines for our constituents. Are there any concerns with that this year or anything that we need to be made aware?
Not as of yet.
Okay. Because I saw somewhere else that someone made forgiveness for not paying today, but I don't think that's the way we're structured. I just wondered if we needed to be aware of anything.
That suggestion has not been made to me yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, old business. We have a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending 2021 Northampton County Budget Community Development Grants." Mr. Myers and Ms. Sarinski introduced this ordinance at the April 1st meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this matter? Any discussion from counsel?
It was in front of the Finance Committee yesterday, and I think we got a lot of our questions answered by Mr. Barron.
Anything else? Seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. Is there any old business that we need to discuss? Moving on, new business, introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the County Council of Northampton County Authorizing the Purchase of a Trail Easement Containing 0.4298 Acres More or Less As Determined by Survey of Real Property by the County of Northampton in Plainfield Township, Pennsylvania," from Donna M. Garrity. I need someone to sponsor the ordinance. Ms. Sarinski? And I need a cosponsor, Mr. Giovanni.
There you go.
A public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held on May 6, 2021 meeting. Second, I have an introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of County Council of Northampton County Authorizing Northampton County to Grant and Convey the Driveway Easement Containing an Existing Residential Driveway 20 Feet Wide by 100 Feet Long as Determined by Survey Across the Land of Northampton County, Located in Plainfield Township, Pennsylvania," to Donna M. Garrity. I need someone to sponsor this. Mr. Myers? Co-sponsor?
That's it.
Ms. Sarinski? Public hearing, debate, and possible vote, May 6, 2021 meeting. Third, we have consideration of appointments, resolution. First is the Airport Authority Board. Mr. Heckman, will you please read the resolution?
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment as indicated hereafter, and it's the Airport Authority Board, it's Dawn Godschall, Northampton, Pennsylvania, term to expire 12/31/25.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the Graysdale Advisory Board. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce the resolution?
I didn't know it was going to be a governmental power struggle, but, okay, here we are. Whereas according to Home Rule Charter, Article 10, Authorities, Boards, and Commissions, Section 1002, membership see confirmation if the court of the county, if the court or the county executive fails to appoint an individual to fill a vacancy on an authority board or commission within 60 days after the occurrence of the vacancy, the county council forthwith shall make the appointment. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments as indicated hereafter. And the appointments are James Irwin, Nazareth PA. All of these would expire for 19/23. Eleanor O'Donnell, Nazareth PA. Get rid of that clip. Bill Ryan, Easton PA. Mary Ann Schmoyer, Bath PA. Lorraine Vogel, Nazareth PA. Sharon Volker, Easton PA.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion regarding this resolution? Mr. Kuzic?
Just real quickly, I would just like to say that a certain amount of friction between the legislative and the executive branch is a sign of a healthy democracy. That being said, I don't necessarily agree with everyone that we're appointing to this board, and I've had disagreements with some of them. But I would say that the need for this board to continue is more important now than ever. I mean, with what we've experienced there with COVID, the empty beds, the trouble we've had filling positions and the mandates, the purpose or the reason that this advisory board was formed was because at the time, the thought was that most of us sitting here didn't have the expertise as either teachers or lawyers or retirees, that we could set up a body that would bring some expertise, where we have former employees, nurses, doctors, and so that they would be able to provide an additional level able to provide an additional level of advisement that maybe might be lacking from county council. So, I think that they should begin meeting, and I think that they have a lot of work to do. And again, even though, you know, I've had my disagreements with some of the people here, I think they all will contribute towards, you know, fixing some of the issues that we've had as a result of COVID. So, thank you.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes, I think, and I think we handled it well. That's why the charter specified that our legislative branch would have a solicitor as well as the executive branch, which I don't think they did in Lehigh originally, but I think they came to regret that. But that being said, we, yeah, I think the appropriate action was taken. We pay Mr. Spidoni, like any other counsel solicitor, to give us his interpretation of the law, and I didn't want to see these people, who I think are all good people, be the victim of any kind of debate on law. And he gave us this resolution, and I think at the end of the day, it accomplishes what we wanted to accomplish, so that's why it's in front of you. I would urge approval.
Any further comments or questions?
I just want to say, I'm very happy to see some of the names from our Save Greysale days, and I know how diligently they worked for Greysale, and I'm sure they'll continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. With no further comment, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, everyone, for that collaboration between the branches of government. Collaboration is a good thing. Next, we have a consideration of a personnel request, Department of Human Services, Greysale Resolution. Mr. Heckman, one more time.
Put your glasses on, Ray. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of RN Assessment Coordinator, Pay Grade CS 271A, salary $60,764 shall be eliminated in the Department of Human Services, Greysale, effective April 16, 2021. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of RN Infection Control, Pay Grade CS 261A, salary $58,031 shall be created in the Department of Human Services, Greysale, effective April 16, 2021. And this was discussed at the Personnel Committee meeting yesterday, and we received a very informative presentation on it, and I would urge counsel to approve it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing hearing none, moving for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business before counsel this evening?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
As one who speaks, who's listening in on the phone, I don't know what you did to improve the technology, but it has been no problem at all being part of the meeting with this and listening on the telephone.
Good job, Mr. Giovanni.
Mr. Giovanni, thank you.
Tom sprinkled pixie dust on the phone.
I didn't do it. No, all we have to do is sprinkle it on the monitors.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you, Peg, for that feedback. Are there any counsel committee reports? Mr. Heckman?
We had a county council personnel committee, the fruits of which, in all ways, were just presented to me. That's my report.
Mr. McGee?
Finance Committee met yesterday, and we discussed, we had one item on the agenda. It was the budget amendment for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which is some of the funding coming down from the federal government. And we're happy to say that we will, the Department of, working on it, procurement, they're getting it out as fast as they can. Mr. Barron was in yesterday to let us know the particulars about how the money is being transferred and the folks that are involved in it. Thank you. So, we'll be able to get this money out here, hopefully in the near future, to some of the people that really need it. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yesterday, we had a Capital Projects Committee meeting. We reviewed bridge projects, government center, review Greysale projects, parks and recreation projects, and prison projects. And on, in front of you tonight, you should have gotten what I asked Mr. Dirtinger to get for us, an update on what we're doing at the 911 Center. I think everybody should have that in front of them. It's this week, it's telecommunications week, and we have a lot to celebrate at 911 Centers. Staffing rates are at all-time high, 60, 64 positions, a full complement of supervisors. Our average call response, priority calls for calls and dispatch response are faster, fastest at 51 seconds. Before consolidation with Bethelm rates, these calls were 1 minute, 40 seconds. Implementation, the new software system, and everything's working well. So, in 2020, there were 107,611 emergency calls. Call volume is slightly down from the previous year to its largest dip in April of 141,499. Additionally, there are 26,502 radio initial calls. Call volume has dropped 30%. And on the back of it, you have a little graph that shows you what's going on, and I appreciate that you got this for us, Mr. Dirtinger. And last, with that, I asked them about how we're doing with the forensic center, and if you didn't hear it, we're in great shape. Except, we got to get Zach to get everything else into the new building. That's the only thing we have hanging out there. Otherwise, everything's good, and I appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you. Mr. Kuzic?
We had an Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting today, where a presentation was given by the Department of Environmental Protection regarding grid-scale solar. The gentleman's name was Robert Young. We also discussed the new park rules and regulations update and several projects, the two of ours, Trail Gap, the Northern Tier Trail Partnership, and also updates on Mincy Lake Greenway, Wangrude Park, Bertrude B. Fox Conservation Area, and Mincy Lake Wardeness Area.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Counsel liaison reports. Mr. G.
The technology governance meeting met on April 6. Of course, I didn't get the proper links to attend, but I did call Bob Mace afterwards and asked him about the most important thing about the polycarity situation, the deployment. He says the virtual machines are deployed, configuration with the vendor is going forward, and they hoping to be testing it before our next governance meeting in May.
Thank you. Tell them that we need some technical assistance on that. If the message that was left is that we do not touch that, that's a problem if they're not.
Yes, I will talk to Bob about, Mr. Mace about that.
Maybe that's not a technical issue, but maybe that's a female error, but whatever. Thank you. Any other liaison reports?
I just have a question for our Planning Commission members. We, today in the mail, I got this big packet from Becky Bradley about COVID effects and some other things. Will she be appearing to do a presentation before us regarding that? Do you know?
She's trying to schedule something now.
Thank you.
Vice President?
Yes. Liaison reports. Okay, thanks. Farmland Preservation, I attended. There are 17,585.42 acres on 219 farms that are now preserved. There are 38 applications, 10 are in process. That's from 2020 to 2021. So, we have 18 in the pipeline from 2021. That's kind of exciting. I also went to the ProSAB meeting, which is the Parks Recreation Open Space Advisory Council meeting as liaison, and we discussed many of the things that we just went over today in the ELU meeting. And I just want to mention that our Carstiology Group continues to meet and that we have several reports, and we're compiling a lot of data and information. And our next meeting, we will have Penn Doc at the meeting. We still have not received a hearing date from, for public hearing from DEP, to my knowledge.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? I have one from the GPA, which met on April 6. We reviewed the draft audit, and at this point, they have been given a clean opinion, which they said is the best you can get, so that's very good. And kudos to our treasurer, who has made, that's Ron Donches, he's made the process so organized and seamless since I first got on. I can't say enough about that. You heard from Mike Amili, the bridge project is moving along, and we have 14 finalized and completed bridges, and then four within substantial completion, which I think were within days.
End of the month.
The other news that I thought was exciting was that Glendon Borough finally approved our request to work on that project. We've been waiting for a long time. And so, the grant was sent in the fall to the state, and there will be a hearing on May 25 at the Commonwealth Finance Meeting to determine if we can get the money that we are requesting to move the project forward. And then the next steps would be demolishing the building and putting out a bid for the package to do so.
We got to save that Sprite sign.
You know, we're going to have to have an auction for the Sprite sign. I know we wanted to get it for Mr. Barron for his birthday. I'm sorry for the delay. We'll get it to you next year. With a Sprite sign on it. But, no, seriously, I think GPA's doing, it's, we're back to doing the business of what we intended to do. So, it's very good. That's all I have for liaison reports. Counsel Clerk's Report. Linda?
Just a reminder that if anyone has any presentations, we would like to have them in the office by noon the day before the meeting.
Thank you. And anything else? No? County Solicitors' Report?
Nothing.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second?
Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
I still got you out in good time, folks. There you go. It's only, what, 7:30? I just got to say. And I had a presentation, so I thought I was going to mess up. Well, we didn't finish them.